Ellen Iverson as Vice Chair, I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board, Monday, October 27th, 2014. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, in your table file you will have, find some additional items for the consent grouping, including personnel items, appointments, increased, decreased, change in assignments, resignations and retirements. You'll also see a copy of the PowerPoint presentation for Sibley Elementary for their school improvement plan. So you'll have those materials. And you also have the various recommendations or additional recommendations for employment. So those are the additional items that have been moved for the table file this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We have an opportunity now for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Okay, let's look at that. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, October 10th. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Any discussion?
Oh, I just know from October 13th, October 10th.
Oh.
But it's correct in there.
Okay, sorry, thank you. Allos in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting held on October 13th, 2014, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. On to announcements and recognition. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, we have a couple of announcements this evening. First of all, Northfield High School's science teacher, Dr. Pat Riley, presented Green Chemistry at the Education Minnesota Workshop on October 16th and 17th. The name of his workshop was "How to Create a Non-Toxic Classroom at Home." Many products such as cleaners, school supplies, food packaging contain harmful chemicals that can impact children's health and ability to learn. Participants in the workshop learned about ways that educators and parents can reduce children's exposure to harmful chemicals by making different choices in the classroom and at home. We also were fortunate to be able to participate in the rights-on-after-school events last Thursday. And we actually had events going on at both Northfield Middle School and also at the Greenville Park Community School. Erin, maybe you'd like to share a few thoughts about population, how many people were there and the kinds of things going on?
Sure.
Sure.
So the middle school youth center had an open house and enrichment activities from 3:00 to 5:00 last Thursday. There was about 60 middle school students that participated. They did, if you've seen the TV show Minute to Win It, they did Minute to Win It activities kind of throughout the, the time, the open house time, which was really fun to see. The Greenville Community School also had kind of an open house. They had Mr. Kraft played kickball, there was Zumba, they're Growing Up Healthy was there with their mobile food, fresh fruits and vegetables, Just Food was there with snacks to sample. There was art clubs taking place, homework help and some board games. And there was about 150 people that had attended as families from Greenville Park. And then there were about 50 more Wings members. If you remember, Wings gave us the Dare to Dream grant and they had used this as their fall event to show their members kind of what was happening there. So they received about a 15-minute presentation on what's been taking place at Greenville Park. And there was roughly 50 women from that organization that were there too.
And we managed to have a partial eclipse of the sun at the same time. So we did have people out with appropriate glasses checking out the partial eclipse.
That is correct. And Booker was there too.
And also Booker was there. He's finally back out of mothballs. And the city actually has a library employee now that has gotten their CDL license. And so now Booker is going to be able to start getting out to schools and to other places within the community as the library is ramping up or thinking about ramping up with their expansion plans. Couple of other pieces in terms of announcements. Again, congratulations to our Northfield Raiders who won the, let's see, it's the, it's not the sectional title, but it's the sectional semifinals, right?
Subsection.
Subsection championship, section two, AAAA. A. Sounds like we're in Canada. It's five As. And so I believe now go up against Mankato for the, Mankato West for the sectional championship. Also would like to share with you just briefly, you know, last time we talked about the 30 different metrics that we were looking at as part of World's Best Workforce. We've now added a 31st metric where data is now being provided to us from the Minnesota Office of Higher Education, where they really have taken a look at the percentage of high school graduates who have to enroll in developmental or remedial courses once they go on to post-secondary education. And I'm pleased to announce that as we looked at the data, our students basically have fewer students that are having to take remedial classes, both across the country and in Minnesota, than any of the other Big Nine schools. And in fact, our numbers are at least half as small as any of the other, of the other schools in the Big Nine. And if we look across the entire state of Minnesota, I could only find three other high schools across the state who had lower percentage of graduates that had to take remedial classes. And those are kind of usual suspects. Eden Prairie, Edina, and Mountain View. Minnetoka and Bemidji and Brainerd and Wayzata are all tied at 5% in terms of our percentage of students that have to take developmental courses. So again, this will be another data point that we can use. The other really nice thing in looking at this is we looked at data over the last several years. Our percentage of grads who have, have had to take those classes has come down every year for the last several years. So it's, it's a good place to be in terms of knowing that what we have seen in terms of ACT data about the percentage of students from the ACT data that are identified as being prepared in all four of the areas where we have a, we're in the top 20 in the state in terms of the percent that are prepared in all four areas. This data pretty much bears that out for the small amount or small percentage of students having to take remedial classes. So just wanted to share that information with you. And those are all the items that I have.
Thank you. Is there anything, anybody else would like to ask? So first item for discussion is the school site improvement plan for Sibley Elementary, where members of you receiving your table file copies of the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us tonight. Tonight, RTI coaches Tanya Will, Becky Gane and I will present the Sibley School Improvement Plan. I'm going to address Sibley's student achievement goals and our progress. And then Tanya and Becky are going to address how we're moving forward and what we're doing as a building to meet our new goals and, and like I said, work with our students this I'm just going to go through and review scores right away. And the one thing that you'll maybe remember about, about when we make our presentations, we do kind of shake it up a little bit and we've changed our approach. So tonight you're going to hear, you're going to see scores. All of this is in your packet of information. But you're also going to hear from our PLC teams. And there's a brief video clip that Tanya and Becky will share. And that'll show you how our umbrella goals within our school improvement plan are being carried out through the PLC process and the SMART goals that are, are happening at each particular grade level. Here you see our MCA scores from last year in the area of reading. And while we didn't have specific building goals tied to MCA scores, we typically always include our MCA scores in the school improvement plan. They're a measuring stick for schools throughout the state. And our scores from the spring of 2013 to the spring of 2014 are very similar when we, when we look back. If you recall, our old goals, our old school improvement goals were written in a way where we were looking for some accelerated growth. And we wanted 65% of our students to meet 125% of their typical growth target over the course of a school year. And again, we were looking at the acceleration perspective there. And what happened between last year and this year is the rules of the game changed a little bit. We decided as a district last year to, well, let me, let me preface this by saying, we were looking at our student growth from fall to spring. And we decided last year that we needed to weed the garden from the testing perspective. And when we did that, we made the fall test optional for teachers, just knowing how much time and effort goes into taking those tests. So we figured we would test in the spring. We went through that process. We made some administrative decisions along with our RTI coaches. And we decided to, that we really needed to weed the garden during the spring testing season because the MCA test also fell during that time. So what we're doing with, with this is what you see up there, the percentages, instead of being fall to spring, it would be the previous spring to last spring. And what happens when you measure from spring to spring, which we're going to be in a year-long process moving forward, is that long summer forgetting happens. And when we're looking at, at meeting 125% of our growth target after students have three months off, that changes things. So the numbers are skewed a bit compared to when we used to measure in the fall. So students might test at, on a math test at 220 in the spring of the year when they've had that nine months of learning, might come back in the fall and test at a, you know, maybe a 212. And then their growth, the recoupment skills would, would come into play and their growth would be accelerated right away. So they'd be up to that 220 range in a period of time. But still, that growth from, from fall to spring is tougher or is, is easier to get than from spring to spring. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I feel like I twisted my own mind up there, but I hope it makes sense. So that's, that's one thing that really changed for us along the way. That's why these scores are skewed, because it's a spring-to-spring measurement. Now, in the school improvement plan that you have, I think I wrote it as fall-to-fall. Dr. Richardson has the new plan in hand and he and I had a conversation on Friday about should we give you an all-new plan or should I just reference it? And I'm just referencing that during this particular point in the presentation. And then when we move to our goals for the future, we are going to measure fall-to-fall. Does that make sense?
Fall-to-fall.
Fall-to-fall, because we are, we are not going to take that, that spring math test. So currently, what you're looking at here is spring-to-spring. Next year, we'll be measuring fall-to-fall because that spring test is eliminated. Is everybody thoroughly confused? John is?
I'm completely confused. So I thought we eliminated, didn't you say we, you eliminated the fall test and now?
Last year we did. We were looking at, at finding a way, like I said, to weed that garden. We didn't take the fall test as a group last year. And as the year progressed, we realized we would rather measure fall-to-fall than spring-to-spring because of the MCA test that happens in the spring. So kids were actually in the lab, how many times for the math and the MCA?
Six.
Yeah, six times for sure, taking that test. So what we're doing is we're, we're putting that math test, and this is a district decision, we're putting that math test on the fall, in the fall of the year. So our students have already had that. And then we will measure their progress next fall. So it's a year-long deal.
So this will be from fall '14 to '15?
Correct. Yep.
Carrie?
So just to be clear, the, the math testing is fall-to-fall. MCA's continue to be in the spring.
Spring.
And that's the basic new framework going forward.
Exactly.
Okay.
We, yeah, we just wanted to spread this out.
Yeah, okay.
Because we were, and the other thing is we have the OPA test, which is the practice test for the MCA. And that typically happens in November and February. So our students are always being exposed to some kind of assessment. Does that make sense? I hope you all got that because you're really going to be confused when we start talking Z scores.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So one more question.
Yes.
The students who are new to our school in that first, the fall that they're coming, do we do some kind of practice thing with them so they get a little exposure to how the testing's going to work?
It depends where they came from. I mean, we're testing all of our students in the fall.
Yeah.
So really, they have at least two opportunities to be in there. And, and we know that most districts are doing some kind of in-house standardized tests like you know. Yeah. And most, from what we've seen, we get a lot of students coming to us with math scores.
Okay. So before we move on, do board members have any questions on this point? Go ahead.
All right. Okay, now, the other part of it that changed, so the first part of it that changed was in our control, when we test. The next part of the, the change occurred with NWEA, which is, which is Northwest Evaluation Association. And that's the group that puts the math test out there for us. And they used to give us individualized scores on students, which they still do. And then they would provide a, an individualized growth target for each child. And that's where we measured student growth. And we'd look at it from the, from the piece where maybe there was a student who had a 210 on the math test in math and their growth target was 11 points. And if they, if they got to 221, great. It was individualized that way. Other students in the grade might have a 22-point growth target. Every student was different. And then when you really think about it, students who are high-performing students, third, fourth, fifth grade, they might have a score of 250. Their growth target maybe was two points. Because you can only, the ceiling is, you know, they're, they're almost there. So what happened with NWEA is they decided to give us, instead of the individualized growth scores, they assigned a score, a growth target score for the grade. And it's a median score. And that kind of threw us off too. So an example would be, I was sitting with the first grade teachers at their PLC last Wednesday, and they had students with growth targets anywhere from 11 to 22. The growth target for that grade as a whole right now is 17. So the rules of the game there changed too. And, and that's something that we're dealing with. And that impacted, that impacted our scores or our, our goals and how we, how we did overall. So that's something that we're getting used to as well. And we've changed our focus a bit. And I'll share a little bit more about that in just a minute, excuse me, as we look at our goals for 2014, '15. Any questions about that NWEA change? Here are just our math scores for the MCA. And all of this information is in your board packet. These are our math scores. Continue, this is our, our math data. And this again, is we were shooting for that 65%. You look at some, some of those areas, 49% of our fourth graders were, were there, meeting 125% of their growth target, even with the rules of the game changing. Our climate goal, to shift gears a little bit, our climate goal, we tie to our parent survey. And we were looking for 95% of our parents to agree or strongly agree that students show respect for other students, that teachers show respect for other students, and that they, people feel welcome at Sibley. And, and you know, we're right up there approaching that 95% mark with all of those particular areas. And the survey includes roughly 30 questions, I believe. And these are just three that we extracted from the survey. Okay, now, as, as we shift gears a bit, we're looking at our, our goals for the 2014, '15 school year. And Tanya and Becky and I met with Hope a few weeks, Hope Langston, our, our data guru. We met with her last week and she helped us realize that a realistic goal tied to math scores has to be looked at in a little different way than we were looking at it in the past. And these goals are written in a way where by the fall of 2015, 50% of our Sibley second graders will meet or exceed their individualized growth target on the reading map. And we're looking at the fall-to-fall assessment. And the 50%, and you know, we kind of looked at it going, really only 50% of our students are going to meet their growth target. Well, based on how NWEA made the change to the median score, they say realistically, half your students, you look at it as a bell-shaped curve, half your students are going to fall on the right side typically and half are going to fall on the left side. So that's why we chose 50%. We're going to use 50, we're going to use this year as our baseline year and really look to establish, you know, some percentages of where we are in Northfield and how we fall. But that was an eye-opener with Hope. And you, when you think about it from the bell-shaped curve perspective, it does make sense. Any questions about that?
Carrie?
So you're using the term individualized growth target, but NWEA really doesn't provide that anymore, right?
They provide the average for the grade.
So would it be less confusing to use a different term in that?
Um, possibly. I don't know.
Because is it really a grade-level growth target now?
It's, it is, but there are still individual targets. They just don't, they just don't calculate it based off of those individual target scores. So when we go into the dynamic reports piece of the NWEA assessment, we can see those growth targets, those individualized growth targets. But when we extract the data, we can only extract the, the median score. Yeah. It's a convoluted mess.
It is?
Yes. Yes. And you know what? The other thing is, you know, Roger was fantastic to work with and, and I'm finding the same with Hope. And she's, she's just taking a fresh look at this and, and helping us realize, you know, different ways to look at data and different ways to look at the numbers that are, that are coming at us. All right. We also, as a building, have a population of English learners that has been on the rise since our Companeros program came to Sibley five years ago. And with that in mind, we've been analyzing our, our EL scores, our English language scores and, and that data and feel as though we need to take a closer look at that. And Hope has also provided us, provided us with a, a chart that looks at the Z-score. And you guys maybe are familiar with Z-scores. Hope said she talked about it briefly at the last meeting. Would you like a refresher on that?
Please give that.
Perfect, because I have just the person to give you a refresher. Tanya Will.
Not quite sure how I got this job, but to just define a little bit about a Z-score. The Z-score is really a growth score that's looking at the, the growth between one MCA score to the next MCA score for any particular student. So if we might look at the growth from third grade to fourth grade. So a typical third grader will score 300-something on an MCA score and a typical fourth grader would score 400-something. In order to determine the Z-score, the state has taken all students who scored at a particular level. If we took like 339 as a score, they took that, that group of kids and found out what typical growth would look like. And it might determine that the average growth might be that a student the next year would score at like a 440. And that, using those numbers there, that particular growth, if a student in Northfield would receive a 339 and then earn a 440, their Z-score would be neutral or at zero. If they scored higher than 440, let's say a 445, then their Z-score would be positive. That would probably equate to like a .5 on the Z-score scale and it would be positive. At the same time, if that same student would, or any student at the 339 would score below that 440 mark, maybe a 434, they would have a negative Z-score. And that, that would probably be like a negative .5. The way we're looking at this with our English learners is our, our whole school will get a Z-score, an average Z-score. Every kid gets a Z-score and then we can average that. And we can take a look at our English learners to see how they compare to everybody else in the, in the state as far as their growth from one test to the next. So instead of just looking at proficiency, are we meeting it or not, we're now able to look at a measurement that looks at growth from one test to the next. Does that make sense?
The other thing that's important to realize with the Z-scores is the Z-score becomes a major component of the development of the MMR score. And so by addressing this piece with a subgroup of English learners, you're really framing an effort to try to say, what is this subgroup doing in terms of its overall contribution to the total MMR or total Z-score for the entire grade level or the entire class? So by going to a zero Z-score, again, what you're really saying is your desire is to have every English learner make at least one year's growth in one year. Which obviously is, is the track we want to take. It's also sometimes a very difficult place for ELs to, to go in terms of their, their reading level from one year to the next to be able to make a full year's growth.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Chris. And as we talk about our English learners moving forward, Katie Sherman, who's a second grade Companeros teacher at Sibley, is, is really working behind the scenes. And we're going to work as a, as a, as a school to come up with a plan to meet the needs of our English learners. And we'll be able to report that back to you, you know, next school year. The next couple of slides are just our math SMART goals. All of that information is in your, in your packet. This is our, our Z-score goal for fourth and fifth graders moving forward in the area of math. And we are looking to move forward again with our climate goals. And, and we're going to measure, you know, how we're doing with our parents again when they report back to us in the spring of the year. Tanya and Becky are now going to take over the presentation and talk about how we're moving forward this school year.
Tanya and I plan to share the great work of the teachers and staff at Sibley, fun We started the year with Ready, Set, Go Day again. It was on August 27th, the Tuesday of Fall Workshop Week. Our first Ready, Set, Go Day was in 2013 and we gave a survey to teachers and parents and tried to make it even better this year. And we made a few simple changes and our entire licensed staff teamed up to make Ready, Set, Go Day a chance to connect with families and get some information about our students before the school year even started. Classroom teachers assessed incoming text levels and partner teachers gathered Dibble's reading and math data. This early information gave teachers an informed starting point with students and allowed for instruction to begin earlier in the school year. We kind of hit the ground running because we have all that information before kids even come. Strong core instruction is always where we start. We have an incredible group of teachers who are open to new thinking and they're constantly trying to improve their teaching practices. They expertly gather and analyze data to make the best decisions for students. Differentiating is a daily practice and core instruction to meet the varying needs of the children in their class. Teachers differentiate multiple times a day in both academic areas and behavior. Students' varying needs keep teachers on their toes. They do their best to know as much as they can about each child and tailor their teaching to meet those individual needs. The optimal learning model is a large part of elementary teaching. Teacher modeling, I do. Guided practice, we do. And independent practice, you do, is best practice for our youngest learners. This model releases the responsibility of the learning to the child in a way that is most appropriate and breeds success. Groups of teachers continue to gather every Wednesday morning to dig into the work of the, the important work of the professional learning communities. They analyze data, they create SMART goals to meet the stu, their current student needs. And they also use guiding questions and common assessments and common pacing in order to keep consistency among the grade levels. What we decided to do this year is hear from each of the PLC groups. We asked them if, you know, you could share just a little bit with the school board as to what's, what currently is happening with your PLC, what would you say? And we asked for about 30 seconds to a minute from each grade level. So we'll start with our kindergarten group and they will tell you what's happening at this time.
We're the kindergarten team here at Sibley, and we worked along with some other teachers throughout the whole district over the summer to develop a common assessment booklet that we have been using on Ready, Set, Go Day and through quarter one to assess students in different areas of literacy and math. On the beginning on Ready, Set, Go Day, we found a need for students to work on knowing letter names and knowing letter sounds. So that is what our PLC goal is until January, that we're going to get about 85% of our kindergartners to know all of their letter names and sounds and to build those early letters.
I'm very excited about our learning target in the U.S. that is working very well in our unit, and thanks for excited to see how we're working and sessioning those in the market.
And our PLC is focusing on increasing students' math scores in math, primary math math. So the learning target is one way that we could do that, involve 600 math vocabulary journals, which we've added and implemented into all of our SMARTboard lessons. We're also focusing on Words Their Way. We've worked their way to promote their, their growth in these spelling pages, and our target is to get them through one. And we have our books for training them through that today with students in the appropriate classrooms and giving them a book in their classroom.
In second grade, we are helping kids take charge of their own learning by having literacy binders, and they have a reader's workshop section, they have a writer's workshop section, spelling, poems for fluency. And another piece of this is...
Due to some step-to-step that we engaged in at Sibley this summer, pretty much a grade level representative from every grade level, we're really excited about how we're using learning targets with our learners. And as a goal of our PLC, we are communicating, being very intentional with our students about communicating what we're learning, we're being transparent about why we're learning it, and then we're also giving students time to reflect on how they feel they're doing in reaching their learning targets. So this is our September literacy target, and these are our October literacy targets. Anything you'd like to add?
The faculty at Sibley this year has noticed a real need in students having a deeper understanding of nonfiction texts. So our focus is right now on working with nonfiction, teaching about nonfiction text structures and the way that information is presented in the nonfiction.
And we're using a variety of texts for this and walking students through some of these nonfiction books that Missy was explaining, and we group our students according to their literacy levels, and we're excited to, to see how it goes.
And within our nonfiction books, we're also focusing on vocabulary within that context, using the vocabulary from each book and different ways to use those terms and learn about vocabulary.
And in fourth grade, we're really excited this year to be working with the Wordly Life books, and it's going to help us with our SMART goal, giving vocabulary scores up and helping students be better readers.
There's also a companion app on our iPads that we use called Moral Advice 3000, so kids can interact with some of the technology along with the books that we purchase. So we're excited about increasing their vocabulary across the board, and we have differentiated, so we have two different books that we're using this year.
So some things that we've noticed within our fifth grade class this year is that they are really low when it comes to understanding nonfiction texts. So something that we have set as our goal is that students will use coding strategies to improve the comprehension of nonfiction texts. So within our flexible grouping time, they're going to have different text levels at their reading level, and we are going to use these coding strategies to help them understand what it is that they are reading.
All right. So many of the PLCs spoke about the work that they're doing through, during their flexible grouping time. When possible, support staff join the flexible groups in order to increase the teacher-to-student ratio, and this arranges for students to receive instruction, and that targets their needs, and for teachers to tailor their feedbacks to promote student learning. Teachers continue to utilize interventions to target individual student needs. As we enter into year three of the, of implementing the RTI process, teachers are identifying specific needs and matching interventions to these. Sometimes the interventions are delivered by classroom teachers, and sometimes teachers utilize Accelerate Northfield volunteers to deliver and track these interventions. On the left, you can see April Osterman, fifth grade classroom teacher, doing incremental rehearsal, which is a fact fluency intervention in this case, and our own Becky Gany doing a reading intervention over here, helps fluency with the child. Becky and I play a role of training multiple volunteers to accelerate Northfield. The power of that particular program in helping meet the needs of our kids is immense. Teachers are also able to access their materials for intervention through our Northfield RTI website that's underneath the Department of Teaching and Learning. We're pretty excited about that right now.
We are so thankful to have these three people as part of our Sibley team. As our enrollment has doubled over the past few years, this support team has become a vital part of how we meet the needs of our changing population. Kathy Bennett has been an important part of Sibley's literacy instruction for many years. Kathy is very flexible and always willing to do what's best for kids. Her background in reading recovery helps guide her instruction with our new Tier Two resource, LLI, or Level Literacy Instruction. We work closely together to match students to intervention. Kathy works with the most struggling readers in our building. Peter McGory is a Minnesota Reading Core member in his third year at Sibley. He works with the Bubble Kids, or the kids in grades K through three that fall just below benchmarks. I am Peter's internal coach, and I, Peter and I also work together to determine who is on his caseload and which interventions are appropriate for each student. And then Michael Garlets is a second year as a Minnesota Math Core member, and he works with students in grades four and five who fall just below benchmarks in math. Tanya serves as Michael's internal coach, and the two of them work closely to determine his caseload and how to best meet student needs. These three people are an important part of our team and always keep children at the forefront when making decisions. For the past two years, we have experimented with two grassroots programs at Sibley to provide more reading support. Super Tutors, I train fourth and fifth grade students to pair up with a younger struggling reader, a K or one student. These tutors and readers commit to working together for two 20-minute sessions per week. All students benefit from this practice. The younger students get a boost of their early literacy skills, and the older students are proud of their work volunteering time to help a younger child. Summer Success Binders, we, you have heard me talk about before. This is a program we kind of built to help with the summer slide, making sure kids are reading over the summer, and we provided a certain number of kids, I think we had 90 binders go home this summer with some of our struggling readers. And those binders had individualized interventions in them and also leveled books that were at their independent reading level. We got some money from an HCI grant, and Scott put some money into this program so that kids could have books at their independent reading level. The, the binders were meant for parents to use with their kids at home or for the students who went to summer school. Our summer school staff also used those binders with some of those kids. We set up an email account with the school, and as kids finished books, they could email that account. And one of us on the team, we divvied up the summer, checked the email account every day, and we did some drop-offs with leveled books. The future of this program is uncertain. We had a hard time getting the books back, so we're not sure where that's going to go. Beyond Words, this is our 11th year. We're set for April 9th, 2015. Arts and writing take a front seat for this annual event. The night profiles the artwork of Sibley students. This is by far our biggest event of the year. Students and their families join together to celebrate students and art and community. We are excited about our new art teacher, Erica Ness, and the role she will play in this tradition. All of you are welcome to attend. Dr. Richardson, I believe, has volunteered as a Rotary member. We have the Rotary members that help us out.
Yes, in fact, I think I served, either served food or bus tables, I believe, was my job.
Yes.
And I did some reading, too.
Yeah.
And Celebrate Math Week doesn't have quite the history of Beyond Words, but it came about as an idea generated from a group of teachers who were hoping to have some sort of celebration of math. And during this week, all students celebrate special days like Estimation Day or Name That Number Day or Pattern Day. And specialists choose different activities that kind of mesh with whatever their specialty is. We've had some music in math, and Fayed, you know, takes some creative turns as well. And they just kind of emphasize the way that math is embedded in the things that they're doing. At the same time, we often have college or community volunteers come in to share their expertise. And this year, Celebrate Math Week will be during the last, last week in January, which would be the 26th through the 30th. You're welcome to come and check it out.
In literacy, in the area of literacy, we continue to focus on high-quality core instruction using the resources we currently have in place. Teachers are refining their practice to know text levels of students and provide books and instruction to meet their needs. Words Their Way provides much-needed word work and vocabulary. You heard a lot of teachers talking about that being their focus for their PLC goals, their SMART goals. That has been consistently kind of a lower strand for us is in the nonfiction and vocabulary area. So there's some really good energy surrounding that. If we look ahead, there's a lot of great energy surrounding common pacing and local common assessments. Teachers are creating local formative assessments to inform their instruction in their flexible groups. PLC teams have worked to create smaller focused goals that help inform their teaching and adjust along the way. So we talk about kind of these big goals that are kind of our umbrella goals, and we're really kind of making a shift in our PLC work to make smaller focused goals, maybe looking at something for six weeks, having checkpoints along the way, and adjusting to see if kids are meeting those goals in a, in a shorter time period. The RTI website is fabulous and makes it easy for teachers to access interventions. We're working to refine our practice of matching students to interventions. And a big push for Tanya and I this year will be to work more closely with our special ed folks and EL teachers to look at new ways to meet the needs of our changing population.
As we look at current practices and looking forward with math, we continue to teach the standards using everyday math as our core curriculum. As we respond to the varied needs of our students, we're exploring a guided math format to deliver this instruction. Last year, we also implemented extramath as a replacement technology that would support the acquisition of math facts. This year, we're using this resource, resource to support students in the efficient mastery of math facts, and we are working towards our grade-level fact fluency goals. We have established several interventions that are proven effective in the areas of fact fluency and computational fluency, and we're expanding this repertoire to, of interventions to include problem solving. And we're also being very intentional about matching our math volunteers to the student needs. As far as progress monitoring goes, we continue to use DIBbles as our progress monitoring system. And for those that are far below benchmark, we've added Focus Math as a resource for intensive intervention. And then as Becky mentioned, we'll continue to have conversations and thinking around ways to support our English language learners, not only in language acquisition, but also in support of the core standards, including math vocabulary and comprehension and problem solving. And one more plug for Celebrate Math Week, we're going to continue with that at the end And in the area of climate, as we look at current practices and looking ahead, as you can see, there are several things in place to support the climate for students and promote a safe environment. As we move forward, we will continue with these current practices and include team building in our staff development sessions in order to support the climate among staff. Okay, our first staff development session this year set the stage for a school-wide theme called Sibley Rocks. Now, each letter in ROCK stands for ingredients needed for students and staff to meet their goals. R for resilience ties into the work of Angela Duckworth, who studies how grit or resilience impact success. And our other goal-setting ingredients include organization, confidence, knowledge, and skills. We return to each of these topics throughout the year during our professional development time and utilize the strengths of our staff as we learn from each other. We've also expanded our staff development opportunities for our educational assistance, realizing how powerful that can be as we create a common language and build the capacity among all, all those that work directly with kids. In addition, teachers may use ROCKs as symbols for students as they meet goals. It's a very inexpensive little token for them, and as staff, we really recognize and honor our ability to be rocks for each other amid the complexity of our jobs.
I was really, I was expecting you to burst into song here. Because this could be Science Rocks, now we could go to Sibley Rocks, right?
That actually happened at our first staff development meeting where, not Tanya, but Paula Bargre, saying, "We will rock you," actually, and we changed the, Tanya changed the words, so.
There is video.
There may be a video about that.
There is video.
It's out there. There's lots of cool things going on with ROCKs, and people are doing ROCK ceremonies. Maybe you've heard of this, where everybody kind of picks a rock and they kind of make a wish for the year, and then they put that rock in the bowl, and, you know, it symbolizes a community. We did that as a staff, and we, then we also did it with the EAs, and so they added their rocks to the bowl, and a lot of people are doing that in their classrooms. So there's lots of really kind, kind of fun things revolving around the ROCK theme. So Sibley really does rock, so.
With all the talk of differentiation in the classroom, then the idea of differentiating our staff development seems like the next logical step. Teachers can now choose to attend one or two staff development sessions per month, depending on their own interests and needs. At the beginning of the year, we asked teachers what kinds of support they needed, and staff development topics were chose based on those needs. Tanya and I continue to provide staff development around the topics of Jim Knight's work on high-impact instruction, Carol Dweck's growth mindset work, and Pat Quinn's RTI research. Our role as instructional coaches has given us the opportunity to observe teachers in the classrooms and give them feedback on best practices. We continue to dabble in this in an effort to help teachers improve their instruction. We want them to be comfortable with people watching and giving them feedback in a non-evaluative fashion. But we have also invited teachers to share their expertise. On October 7th, we had four high-impact teachers share their best organization tips and tricks. Last week, third grade teacher Kelly Johnson and fifth grade teacher Dan Foley shared how the telling of stories builds prior knowledge and engages learners. In November, we look forward to a presentation by Carleton professor Eva Paulsfe. She will share her knowledge of how we can build confidence in our English language learners. Staff development has become an exciting part of our learning and community building this year.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there questions?
As you ponder that, I just want to point out that a couple of years ago, we gave the reins to Tanya and Becky in regard to staff development, and they have, on the ROCK theme, rocked it. They've done a tremendous job, and it has become, staff development on a monthly basis has really become a part of, of what we do. And, you know, there are, there's, I'm just really proud of the staff and how they've come together. We have terrific teachers. We have terrific teachers, we have terrific support staff. I feel like the group teams up with parents well to meet the needs of kids, and there's a lot of positive momentum going on. And you heard, you know, there are a reference to our changing population, and about five years ago, we maybe had 15 or 20 English language learners, and now we're at 55 or 60. And our free and reduced population was at, you know, probably the 10% to 12% range, and now we're up around 25%. So there are, there are changes that have occurred, and we are adjusting to those changes and moving forward. But I'm really proud of the staff and how they take a professional approach to educating students. And, you know, they make it more of a family affair than you might think. You know, parents are really involved. I want to talk briefly about a change we made. You guys know the block scheduling change we made several years ago has really been impactful in that we can, we can, we can do some flexible grouping throughout the day. And last year, we made a change to our recess plan. Typically, students were going out to recess right before lunch, and we had a number of different people over the, over the past several years who would supervise them. And that included specialist teachers or educational assistants. But last year, we made a change, and we totally shook up the recess schedule in a way where if, we looked at it from the perspective of students needing exercise in their day. And, you know, there were, there were two grade levels of students that either had FIED right before recess or right after lunch, which is just after recess. And we looked at it in a way where if students have morning FIED, then they most likely now have afternoon recess. We no longer have recess tied to the lunch schedule and vice versa. And classroom teachers are supervising that recess time. And where I'm going with this is down the road of discipline referrals to the office. When students were out there with one or two grades at a time, and they were with somebody maybe that they didn't know very well as far as a supervisor, there were anywhere from one to 10 kids sent in from recess on certain days. And that would, I mean, it felt to me like it was every day. And either Noreen Cooney or myself would work with the students on the decisions that they made outside. As we made this change last year, this is no lie, I had six recess referrals all year long. Just a crazy positive change. And, you know, and those were situations where, if I were to look back at the data, three of them were probably with, you know, teachers who maybe were substitute teachers for the day or something like that. So that has been one really significant impactful change that we've made, and, you know, we're seeing good things from that. Any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Carrie?
Well, thank you for the presentation. You answered a lot of my questions, and I really appreciate you fleshing out the change in the recess plan, because I was going to comment on that. I really like the idea of having classroom teachers supervising the kids at recess, but this sounds even better to break it up so the students are getting more physical activity, you know, get their wiggles out during the day.
Sure. Air the sink off, I think.
Okay, well, we'll have our way of taking it.
So I had a couple of questions about, I just want to understand better how you, how you work on the academic vocabulary part of it, and if you, if there's a way to share that between buildings.
The academic vocabulary, what do you represent?
Well, you know, talking about fluency and the Common Core and trying to build academic vocabulary as opposed to just vocabulary in general, I guess.
Sure. Do you, why don't you guys want to tackle that one? Do you understand the question?
Vocabulary is always really tricky because you, you can find lists and lists and lists, right? Which is what you're talking about, general vocabulary.
Well, that's what I was trying to understand. Is it that kind of process, or is it, is it, you know, there are concepts students need to know, and therefore we're going to build a vocabulary list around vocabulary that goes with the science standards for that year?
Yep. You can see that the third grade took the approach of, they took their LBD leveled readers, which are leveled readers that would go along with our Literacy by Design, and they took the glossaries of those and took vocabulary out of those, because those are books that kids will be reading. And all of, they took all of their nonfiction-only texts. So that's one way of doing it, so that it makes sense within their text, rather than just lists and lists. We know that just giving them lists and lists to define and write in a sentence is just not going to do that much. But there's a lot of good energy on different ways to do it. We've looked at Robert Marzano's Six Steps to Teach You Vocabulary. But I think what you're talking about is kind of that common language, that academic vocabulary, and we're trying to be really consistent because that, we know that is powerful. Like, if we talk about process writing, for kids to hear the steps and process writing is really important, that it's consistent from, you know, grades K on up. And so we're trying to get more consistent in that area. The coding text is kind of a new thing that all teachers in grades two through five will be working on. And that's just really a system of reading nonfiction text and, you know, using different codes. A question mark if you have a question, you write "aha" next to it if that was something new information. So everybody's going to be using that exact same coding system. So we're, we're working to get some kind of common language around those things. When we, when we introduce comprehension strategies, and we talk about connecting and inferring and those types of things, kids are hearing that common academic language all the way through. And we can get better at it, of course, too.
And is that, is there an effort to make that consistent between the buildings?
Oh, sure. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. You know, RTI coaches are, you know, we meet every week, and then we break off into literacy and math groups to work on those exact things. In fact, on our RTI website, our vocabulary interventions, we don't have any in there yet, because we just haven't found anything that is making sense to us right now. So that's a big push for us this year.
Okay. And I mean, I guess the reason I asked the question is that I didn't see action plan steps that related to vocabulary specifically. Unless it's there, I didn't see. That was kind of why I asked.
It may not be there, but there are certain things that aren't there that are continually being done.
Okay. And then, and then, can I ask one more?
I find myself training volunteers or working with teachers in meeting those needs as well. In fact, today, a volunteer was in my office working with a second grader who is kind of an outlier, and they were having a great discussion about different mathematicians and what that means about life. So we, you know, as these things come up, we certainly try to meet the needs wherever they're at. And I do agree, we have had a great focus on how we're going to meet kids that aren't at the benchmark, but we can't ignore those that are above already. And we need to make sure that we're always working to have kids grow, because that's our biggest goal. Thank you.
I think, Carrie, too, the key with this is everything we've done with leveled instruction and flex grouping is set up to provide us the opportunity to meet kids where they are. And so when you look at the math groups, for instance, you're going to have groups that are needing additional support, you're going to have kids that are kind of ticking along at their, at the normal speed, and you've got kids that are on the high end. We have the ability to modify and look at additional differentiated curriculum for those students so that we can meet their needs where they are. And in comparison to the old strategy where, with a very limited amount of funding, we could put a GT coach into a building so the student might see them for 40 minutes a week if we were lucky. Now, basically, students that are at the top end have support at least four days a week in terms of instruction that lets them move through the things they can do well quickly, and then gives them the ability to do other pieces. The other thing I think that's important, as these guys have shared this, is, is I think all of our buildings, and Sibley is definitely right, right there in terms of the focus, is the whole concept of looking at the modifications we've seen in expectations through the Common Core, which really is driving this nonfiction reading skill set. So the idea of being able to look at vocabulary that's tied to nonfiction resources, to be able to think about vocabulary that's tied to processes for getting something to happen or to complete a process or problem-solving activity, all of, all of the work that's being done with that vocabulary right now, I think, will benefit us as we go forward, because it will build skills in kids that will help them to read more successfully in terms of nonfiction resources. And when they're assessed in that reading, that will be able to demonstrate, I believe, a higher level of performance. It's also, I think, why, as we looked at what happened when we moved from the old MCA to the new MCA, why the scores went like this and went through the floor. And it's, they went through the floor because we moved from something that was short passages, almost totally fictional pieces, to something that was almost totally nonfiction and significantly longer passages. And so teachers, I think, now are gearing up for the fact that they need to help kids build that set of skills.
Board members, any one else with questions? Rob?
Well, I'm interested, after this discussion, you mentioned a lot of sort of variables that have changed over time, the moving from the individual to school averages for certain things, and moving from spring to spring to fall to fall, the assessments changing from one year to the next. So from 2012 to 2013, you can't compare those, and, you know, then changing the goals from 65% to 50%. And there's this sort of moving target, and previously...
Welcome to our world.
Previously, there's, you know, there's the emphasis on fiction passages, and then suddenly it changes to nonfiction, and that changes everything. And so it seems like you can only get data for like two to four years at most, and then things change again. And it seems to me that things are more effective if things are consistent over time. And so a lot of this seems to be driven by people from the outside saying, "You should do this, you should do this." And I'm just, you know, I'm, as someone who reads a lot of fiction, I'm worried that, you know, we'll grow a lot of kids who no longer understand the motivation of characters or, you know, point of view and the things that you used to learn with fiction. So how do you, with all these things coming at you from the outside, all of these, these requirements that are imposed upon you, how do you maintain consistency and make sure that kids are still understanding how to read a novel or a poem as, as well as an essay or a news story?
I think it's a balance. And, you know, we used to be, we used to be skewed a little more toward the fiction side. And, and, you know, that was pretty normal, I think, in most of the schools across the country. And now there's just that infusion of more nonfiction. But it, there has to be a balance there. And I would say there's a balance. Would you agree? You know, it's just, it's just a different focus now. And the one thing data does is it does provide us with, with information of where we might be lacking. And that's something that's, you know, the nonfiction, nonfiction is measured, you know, how are we doing with that? And it's something that we need to address. But there has to be a balance. You know, the pendulum isn't swinging all the way back the other way. You know, we're following, I saw Dr. Richardson doing this, and that's kind of where we're at. You know, we're, we're, we're finding our way through the, through the middle of that.
So when you present these, I mean, you give data where you have like 15% and 10%, which doesn't look very good, but I mean, if you look beyond this data, I mean, what consistent message are you getting from all of the, you know, as you're constantly having to shift to different expectations, do you get anything consistent that you can carry on from, you know, because if we're looking at, on the board, demographic studies and facility studies that are 10-year plans, I mean, it doesn't seem like you can ever get a 10-year set of data that means anything, because everything's shifting. Is there anything consistent that you get out of?
I think one thing to look at would be our, in the area of math, you know, you, we're looking at 120, you know, students meeting 125% of their growth target. If we looked at that 100%, we have most of our, most of our students there. You know, the 10 and 15 percentages that we, that we threw up there are measured on that 125% growth target. But we have several of our classrooms in that area of math who are meeting the 100% growth target as a group. And if you remember how that was measured, students are lumped together by their class. So for instance, if Paula Bargary's class is looking at it as, you know, every student has a growth target, and if I'm a student, and now all their growth targets are the same, but let's say it's 10 points, and I get 10 points, I'm at that 100%. The next student might get, might get five, he's at 50. Another student might get 12, he would be at 120. But what happens is those are all averaged out, and we get scores that way as well. And, and, you know, we look at it from that perspective. Does that make sense? Because we've used that with the board in the past, you know, those, those classroom growth targets. Again, the rules of that game changed when they went to a median score instead of an individual score. But overall, we're making progress. And when you talk about something stable, that math curriculum is very stable. The literacy curriculum is stable as well, but I tell you what, literacy is very difficult to teach. You know, we have students in, in first-grade classrooms that, you know, are coming to us, you know, reading at, at the very lowest level possible. We have others who are reading at the fourth and fifth grade level, and that classroom teacher, you know, during that literacy block time is working with all of them. And that's why you see a lot of groups and a lot of stations, and that's where you see the flexible grouping come into play as well. Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah. Well, I think, I think that what you're saying is just raising this a great question, but I think that, for me, peeling it all down, we are really about creating readers and writers. We know that kids need to be reading every single day, and they need to be reading text that's at their independent reading level. And that, that range in every single classroom is from here to here. And the Reader's Workshop model really fosters differentiation, because you can have someone reading, you know, at, maybe, maybe in a fourth-grade classroom, you might have somebody reading at a second-grade level, and you might have some that are off the charts. And so there's a really big focus on leveled text and getting kids in leveled text, and it's always been that way. The Common Core, if you look at it, it has 10 substandards under informational text or nonfiction, and 10 standards under fiction. So we haven't thrown fiction out. Believe me, that would, that would not be okay in any of our lives. But, but we do know that kids really have to learn to read nonfiction and learn about text structures and those types of things, and we need to just beef that up a little bit, so. Does that help?
It seems like, I mean, there's this incredible focus on all the data, which is great in some ways, but it seems like the consistent thing is that, I mean, there are teachers here who taught my kids and are continuing to teach kids and are reacting to the realities of the classroom, and that's really hard to translate into data points or whatever. So, I mean, I think it, you know, the data part at the beginning, really, the part that came alive for me was just looking at, you know, what's actually happening in the schools. And that's consistent, the good teaching, rather than the data, which is jumping all over the place.
Right, right. We're kind of chasing it, and, yeah. No, I mean, we, we never want to lose focus for, for the fact that we want readers and writers, and, you know, yes, and spellers and all of those things. And, yeah, we do look at a lot of data. It's made us really great in some ways and really tightened our ship in some ways. But we also have to be reminded of, you know, the connecting piece of, of learning to read and the importance of that. We don't have data that shows, you know, I was turned on to reading by my second-grade teacher who, you know, red caps for sale, or, you know. So they have a hard job on some teachers.
One more question. When you were talking about the math core and the reading support and the reading core, you've got a lot of different programs in that small building. And as we've been looking at facilities, I mean, is there, can you say anything about your kind of wish list for, like, how could you create more space for these? Because, you know, some of those people are in closets, pretty much.
They are in closets, yeah. They are. And, you know, we were fortunate a few years ago, yeah, when we, when we... ago, yeah, when we, when we put that, that new wing on Sibley, the locker room area was renovated. And, you know, we created some office space there. But, you know, one thing we created was, was a space for our English learner program when we had 15 to 20 kids in the program. And now we're at 50-some, which is really forcing us to look at our model. And, you know, we're now talking more and more about a push-in model in EL, which would mean that those, those EL teachers would go into the classroom and work with students there more than they would, you know, pulling out. But, yeah, I mean, you know, Peter shares, shares space with Kathy Bennetts now. And he shared space with Becky, you know, last year. And they're, they were literally, you know, back-to-back with students coming in. So space is an issue. You know, in looking at our, at our facility, we're getting by. You know, if we increase, if our enrollment increases, you know, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place there. And Sibley, which, you know, used to be the smallest school population-wise for the last couple of years, up until this year, was, was, we had, you know, the highest population. And I think Bridgewater is at maybe 590 right now and we're at about 580. So, you know, we're, we're very close from that perspective. That, that new wing, though, has given us a lot of relief. And, you know, we did have special ed programs that weren't in the most optimal spaces in the past. And all of our special ed programs have some elbow room. And that's a good thing, you know, right now, too. We still, we have a motor room, we have an art room. You know, we didn't have an art room for a couple of years and we had Art on a Cart. And, you know, we feel fortunate to have those spaces. But square footage is always something we're looking for.
Thanks. Thanks for your patience with my questions.
Sure.
Great question. John?
Well, first, when I was at Sibley, we only got half a gym. So you're complaining about nothing.
Yeah.
Quit your wife.
Quit your wife.
But I want to go back to the, to the spring into fall nose-to-nose model, model question. Because I'm confused again, is, why is there a preference to the, to the MCA scores over the, or the MAP scores over the MCA scores? Why, why choose the MAP test over the MCA score? Or the, I got it reversed again.
I know exactly what you're asking. You're asking, why are we choosing to measure a year's growth with MAP versus measuring a year's growth with MCA?
Correct.
And the answer to that question is the MAP is much more reliable than the MCA. There have been years where we don't get MCA scores until November. And, you know, it's, those are tests that were taken back in, in April and May. We have instant access to the MAP data. And that's something that we can implement right away. So that's something that we appreciate about the MAP. We still look at the MCA, but as Dr. Richardson first referenced tonight, you know, there's a, there's a little deal where if you go to the Department of Ed website and you scroll over your scores, you know, from 2012 to 2013, there's this big notification that comes up that says, do not compare 2012 to 2013. The test changed.
Because we changed the test.
Yeah. So, so really, it's about consistency.
And is, and the test is more consistent from year to year? It's not just about the fast availability of the data?
It's very consistent. And actually, there was a time, and Matt could probably attest to this, that the state was looking at moving the entire test over to NWEA.
We tried very hard in a couple of different state task force efforts to try to get that to happen and got shot down every time, mainly from the feds, who basically said, no, we're not going to let you do that because you have to create your own test. So lots of testing companies got very, very rich-
Sure.
...out of that process. So I think the other key piece, too, John, that's important is we can't change the date when MCA tests are given. They have to be given in the spring. There's a spring window. And so if we're looking at that spring-to-spring piece, moving the MAP test back in terms of fall-to-fall gives us the ability to spread out the test fatigue so that we don't have test, you know, up to this year, we had tests on top of tests. You were taking the MCA test and as soon as you got done with the MCA test, you went into the MAP window and you basically did the MAP measurement, too. The thing we know with the MAP doing fall-to-fall is that, that the summer, the summer slide is there. But it's, when we look at it fall-to-fall, it really is compensating so we know that the actual growth there is real.
So, I mean, you're really, you're talking about the consistency of the exam, the timeliness of the, of the data. And there was a third point in there, but I forgot about it.
And the other piece is the immediacy of the, of getting the data back.
Right. And also that-
Teachers can use that MCA fall data immediately to look at how their kids are doing.
And really, you have, at that point, six months or more of class time to respond to the data.
At least we take that MCA or that MAP test in September.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I point out two more things real quick?
Oh, absolutely.
First one would be, and we kind of hit on this, but every year, I think, for about five years, you guys would ask, well, what are, what are the buildings doing together? And, you know, what's being shared? And I'll just tell you that having the RTI coaches in place has really helped that consistency from Bridgewater to Greenfield and right back around. They meet and they bring back information and they help implement. And what we're doing from building to building to building is consistent. And that's a great thing. And the six people who are in that, in those particular roles are fantastic. The other thing I want to point out is that I think Becky referenced six-week goals, something we talked about at our staff meeting this year and what I've talked about with PLCs, is our goals have to be a little shorter than longer. And part of that reason is with the new teacher evaluation plan, we are looking at student or teachers being measured, you know, based on student achievement. And that's more of a conversation than, than anything else. It's not looking at, did you meet your goal or not? But that's part of our conversation when we're meeting with, when we're meeting with teachers. So the shorter goals are not only helping us, you know, with students, but they're also helping teachers, you know, take a look a little more often at their work and how we're moving forward. And they're being reflective. There we go. That's all I have.
No?
Great report. I learned a lot, very informative, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank Tanya and Becky. They are tremendous people and they work their tails off. They really do.
I just had two quick questions. One was, one of the fourth grade teachers, I believe, in the PLC video referenced iPad use. What have you guys seen in this second year in terms of expanding this that in a small group learning type environment?
The teachers and the students are very comfortable with the use of iPads. It, it doesn't feel like the afterthought that it kind of was in the first year, like, oh wait, I shouldn't be using this or how can I? It feels a little bit more a part of what's actually going on and which is the intention. I would say that the media specialists have helped orchestrate, you know, some of the, some of the learning there. But a lot of the learning is just, hey, I've got a great app. It worked really well. I'll share it with you. And just the sharing out just among our staff is pretty collaborative. There's some work that's just, you know, with a couple of students here and there. But I, when I go into classrooms, I see the iPads being used on a very regular basis and for very specific work that's, that ties back to the standards. So in my opinion, I was sort of surprised that across the board, that it's working with our kindergartners and our fifth graders and everybody in between. So I feel really good about where that's at.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Can I just address one more piece of that?
Yeah.
One really cool thing, sorry, we were going to be 15 minutes, right? We're running an hour, five minutes right now. But one really cool thing that was implemented, I think, last year, Becky Har noticed a need in her classroom where she had students that were, were, you know, way up there in the area of mathematics, 97, 98, 99 percentile. And she used the high school flipped classroom model to actually record herself doing these advanced lessons on the iPad. And then, you know, she would do that at home or, you know, after school, during your prep, whatever. And then students who had demonstrated proficiency in the area of math were excused to go work on these advanced topics in math through that flipped model. And she uses the iPad as the vehicle to actually record and then carry out the lesson. And that actually took off to the point where we did some, some mini lessons last year in the area of technology where we had teachers, you know, would, would pick up a topic of some kind and Becky taught others how she did that. And we have others who are, are taking that and running with it a bit.
Okay, wonderful. Then my last question is about the summer success. And I remember last year when you presented it, I was pretty excited to hear about that. And so now you're kind of alluded to some challenges. What do you see, well, what, what maybe did you see this second summer? And then what, despite the challenges, do you feel like you might be able to move forward on that program?
I'm not sure. It, we were really happy with our second year. We kind of refined things. It was, we thought, you know, you have to, you have to get these interventions in a really simple format so they get used, right? So, so everything has to be there. And we had letter cards in there and high-frequency words in there and really tried to simplify directions for teachers or in summer school or parents, whoever was working with a student. And then we had lots of leveled books, like I said, and we put those books in bags. And those were all part of the binder. And they all went out and kids were pretty pumped about it. And they got these binders. And they were used at summer school quite a bit. 90 binders went out about. We've only gotten about 45 or 50 of them back. And that's a lot of books because a bag might have three or four leveled books in it. We also didn't get much traffic as far as parents trading books in. So, you know, let's say my month was June to be checking the email account. I only exchanged books with one parent the whole time. So we're just, you know, and, and a lot of kids brought them back saying, oh, I just never, I just never. We don't have control over what happens once it goes out there. So it's a little difficult to collect data. We don't know, you know, even though we had lots of guidelines and it's certainly not perfect. And I, we just couldn't continue that if we lose that amount of books. We don't have money to-
No, that's understandable. You know, it's, you try things and they don't always work and you have to adjust.
Yeah. We'll think about it. You know, we'll think about-
It's understandable. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to really spend some time delving in-
An hour and 10 minutes. Really? Yes, it's good.
Somehow Sibley always seems to pull the first site improvement plan date.
That's a plan.
Oh, good. Well, thank you.
Done.
Thank you much.
Okay, thank you. So, board members will move on. We have no items for individual action. There are a number of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Uh-oh. Moved by Ann, seconded by John. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, reminder that prior to our meeting, our next meeting on Monday, November 10th at 6:15 PM, there's a reception for commended National Merit Scholars in the upper cafeteria of the high school. Future meetings coming up are Monday, November 10th and Monday, November 24th. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Will you?
Moved by Noam, seconded by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.